Ready. All right. Welcome back from closed session. Do I have to read anything out? Do we have to, any action to be taken out?
Yeah, so your board may just announce if there was any action taken out of closed session and then the response to that.
So Vice Chair, was there any action to be taken out of closed session?
There is no action to be taken from closed session.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item 6.9. Consideration of Summary of Cannabis Policy Recommendations in Request for Board Direction. Community Development Director Maria Turner, go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon. The board has already received a couple different summaries of, or updates of cannabis policy recommendations. This is your third update. The results of the previous two updates are included as attachments. Attachment one is Cannabis Ordinance Task Force: Recommendations Regarding Proposed Cannabis-Related Business License Types or Permit Types, as well as Possible Zoning Districts Where These Businesses Could Take Place, and the Level of Permits Required, or That Would Be Required For That Type of Permit. The board input and response to that update is included also in attachment one. The second update to the board included, let's see, which is included as attachment two, discussed a number of additional recommendations from the board, and the input and additional responses from the board supervisors at that meeting is included within the staff report. After that second board update, there were two more Cannabis Ordinance Task Force meetings. And so what I am leading with today are the recommendations that came from those two meetings, as well as additional input from the Planning Commission on those two updates, those two meeting updates. The goal for today's meeting and the purpose for today's summary is that the board wanted us to come back to you with all of the recommendations so that you could have your final input before we start writing the draft ordinance. So that'll start after this meeting, and hopefully, we will bring back a vetted draft ordinance for you by the end of this calendar year. And when I say vetted, I mean that it will go through stakeholder, agency, internal review, agricultural advisory committee, as well as notice public hearing at the Planning Commission prior to a notice public hearing before the board of supervisors. So, let's start with the last two meetings of the Cannabis Ordinance Task Force. That is on page two of your staff report. Task Force covered items such as operational hours, delivery hours, and construction hours. And you'll see in the bullet point, a recognition of a general tendency of the task force to want to align wherever possible the local regulations with state regulations. And that's indicated in this one for, that cannabis-related business type hours should align with our state regulations. Or, or and, farming operations and activities would align with just normal other agricultural product hours, but also limiting scheduled deliveries from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Records retention, this also was recommended to align with state regulations.
Real quick, you said 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.?
Mm-hmm.
If I'm reading correctly from the right place, it says 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. With Sunday, 12:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. Am I on the wrong? Sorry, am I in the wrong?
I'm looking at page two of the staff report that says scheduled deliveries from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Do you see that on the third?
Are you talking about the memo itself?
Staff memo.
Not staff report, because there's other staff reports. I got confused about which staff report you're talking about.
I want the shiny new one, the latest and greatest. Yeah, the, this staff memo. Thank you for asking.
Where do you find that?
Right on the memos.
Voluntary Termination of a Use Permit. This has come up through our experience of processing and main, and working with our permatees. Sometimes there are changes to a cannabis business, or the cannabis permatee wants to stop their cannabis business. We do not have a mechanism currently in our zoning code that would allow for a voluntary surrender or voluntary termination of a use permit. Our use permits, they go with the land unless there's an expiration date, in which case for cannabis use permits, it's a 10-year period, or unless it's revoked. There is no way for a permatee to say, "I'm done, I'm stopping, cancel my use permit." We don't have that yet. And so we did talk about creating that sort of a process. With the recommendation being that we look into how that would work, we'll work with county council on creating a process so that it can be voluntarily surrendered. Use of Recreational Vehicles. The board did weigh in on RVs being used as temporary farmworker housing at the last meeting. However, it was revisited with the task force, and I wanted to point out that there is also additional state legislations gone into effect that also is focused on farmworker housing. And so we're working internally just to make sure that our current regulations are in compliance with state law. But there was, the, the task force did talk about the use of recreational vehicles and, and applying the same rules or same regulations that would apply to any other agricultural operation. Our farmworker housing, or, and farm labor camps and farm labor quarters, there are some allowed uses for recreational vehicles existing in there. However, it's important to note that even if they are used, they must comply with our minimum health and safety standards. And so we're still requiring the building permits to oversee and make sure that we do have adequate water and wastewater treatment for those. The next subject was opt-out or Reduced Canopy Process. This is something that kind of started from an internal policy over the last few years, and we'd like to make it more formal. We're going to look, the recommendation was to look to existing state regulations, but currently, we don't have a cap on the number of years a permatee can opt out or have reduced canopy. So we'd like to take a look at that. With maybe a maximum of two opt-out years during the 10-year cannabis use permit. Site Reclamation Bond was discussed. There is a $5,000 bond at the state level, and the task force was amenable to adding that to our regulations as well. Canopy calculation method, this has changed in the last year or two by the state, and the recommendation was to synchronize a line with that canopy measurement method. This is, this will help us to avoid conflict where we're going out measuring our canopy the way we've always done it, and we have encountered a few different permatees who have said, "But the state said, 'I am not covering the minimum amount of canopy that I need, so I have been, I've been forced to expand my canopy to meet the state's requirement.'" And so we've had a couple of different meetings where we've encountered that, had subsequent discussions with the state, and so we're going, we would like to align our canopy measurement with the state just to reduce those conflicts. Remaining Recommendations That Did Not Go Before the Task Force But Are Recommended By Staff. We would like to synchronize ownership description requirements with the state application. This addresses the concern that our treasurer tax collector has brought before this board a couple different times already, in the difficulty his staff has in identifying the licensee or the, the responsible LLC or partnership or some sort of company to understand where the taxes need to be paid or, or billed. We would also like to seek additional ways that we can synchronize with state processes in order to streamline our permit process and our management process. Like to look into one method, or one reason for revocation of a permit, of use permit would be off-site unpermitted cannabis activity conducted by either the permatee or the property owner. Implement several, again, this is kind of a repeat of the one before, just looking for ways continually to streamline our permitting process. We would also like to, the, the board to consider adding setbacks between hemp and cannabis canopy. There currently is not. As well as considering setbacks from hemp to off-site residential uses. And the recommendation that the board consider staff or the community development department taking recommendations of revocation of use permit directly to the board of supervisors rather than the planning commission. Current zoning code allows for either one, but our practice in the last two to three that we have done, just started with the planning commission and then appeals go to the board. It would save some time for this department if we could, if the board has no objection, we would like to still be in compliance with the zoning code, but bring recommendations of revocation of use permit directly to the board of supervisors. The Planning Commission at its June 12th meeting did consider the recommendations just discussed or just listed with you from the task force, and they had, they had the following recommendations. They were taking a look at the, the anchor points versus concrete slab foundation for greenhouses, and the, the recommendation is to encourage anchor points rather than a full concrete slab for greenhouses. The Planning Commission would like to strengthen that encouragement in actually requiring anchor points unless it's not possible due to topography or certain aspects about the site, or it will not cause a loss of prime egg soils. They wanted to voice their very strong support in seeking additional options to mitigate odor impacts from off-site residential uses. They wanted staff to look at possibly requiring a site reclamation bond of $50,000 rather than the $5,000 that is required by the state. They recommended revisiting the farmland protection zone boundaries, particularly for additions of areas within Supervisory District One, which is down in the Middletown area. They were fine with not handling recommendations for revocation, but rather have it go straight to the board, but they're okay if the board has a strong preference. Either way, they'll, they'll continue. And they also requested the board consider adding home schools to the required setbacks from schools, or if that's not feasible, to consider other options, including possible increase of setbacks from cannabis canopy or cultivation areas to off-site residences. We did receive public input that didn't make it before the posting or the holding of that planning commission agenda, and so that was included in your agenda packet as attachment number three. And just so the board is aware, we do currently have 65 pending applications left. Only 30 of those are considered complete. And the reason why I point that out is because of our, our CEQA regulations for permit, then the Permit Streamlining Act, after a project is deemed complete, we then have 180 days to, to conduct all of our analysis and get it before a deciding body, which would be the planning commission. And so determining a project is complete is actually a significant step in the permit processing. That is the summary to bring you up to date from where you've been before, but again, attachments one and two are from your previous updates, and we welcome any input, comments, and direction from the board regarding cannabis policy regulation updates.
Thank you, Maria. Real quick, I've noticed that the groups both support strengthening enforcement, fixing compliant, complaint systems, requiring drought management, improving application process, and enhancing annual reporting. That's just what I've noticed from both. So those are some key wins. I think the others just, we just need to hash out, so I'll let you start. Go ahead.
Well, I, I know we've talked about this before, and it's been brought up every time we have this conversation, is about the drought management and the hydrology analysis of each project. And so I just wanted to get your thoughts on, on how you're considering adding this in and strengthening that.
Thank you.
We heard a public comment earlier today, and it's important to everyone as we move forward that we have water security, so.
Thank you. Yeah, as the board remembers, there was an ordinance passed during a drought that required hydrology studies from every use permit application. And that was so it could address three different questions. One was, how much water do you think you're going to use? How much water do you think is already there? And what's it going to do to impact your, your land and possibly your neighbor's land? The drought emergency was rescinded. However, there is an article already in the zoning code that allows for the department to require any studies they deem necessary to process a use permit application. We have continued to require hydrology studies for use permits that do not propose use of municipal water sources. So if they don't require any water at all, we probably wouldn't need a hydrology study. And if they're not hooking up to municipal water, public water sources, then we wouldn't need that either. But if they're going to use proposing groundwater or surface water, we have continued to require hydrology studies as a part of every single one of those applications, not just cannabis. We do intend to continue this requirement with those, those guidelines, and we're working internally and also with a couple planning commissioners to talk about how we can, how we can improve the criteria we require for these hydrology studies so that we can digest them easily and the public can digest them easily. Some suggestions already on the table are a standardization of the units of measurement. So we're not always going from acre feet to, you know, gallons per whatever, per water. So that, the, the goal will be to have a guideline for the design, or the professionals who are qualified to do these reports, which does include engineers, to be able to understand what we're looking for in these reports so that we can use them, and, and everybody, including the public, can, can digest that data.
Good, because that's what we've been looking for, and that's what we've been needing, and, and an analysis of that usage that is not just provided by the person that's being paid by the applicant.
Yes. We were tossing around the idea of maybe just having hydrogeologists do it, but we have like maybe four in the state, so it would put an unnecessary, I feel, unnecessary waiting period or burden to require it only be done by a hydrogeologist, when our engineers are also capable of doing these calculations. We just feel that giving more guidance on what the department needs in those reports will help us to bridge that gap that we have so far.
Okay, great, thank you.
Did you, you guys have any? You had something?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah, I dropped my marker. Sorry. Okay. The groundwater, of course, is a huge issue. I think I sent you a letter yesterday on a complaint that we have with somebody where they've ran him out of water, a grow has. Do we address, when, when there's water issues in an area and they have a current permit and they're currently growing and affecting their neighbors, do you then revoke?
That is not one of the conditions that could be revoked. However, it's more complicated than when we just get a complaint. We consider a complaint as like our first step. We would take a look at the water usage declared from that permit and with, if they're still within those. Some of our permits, which is actually the case of this complaint that we're still working on internally right now in response to you sending me that email, some of our earlier permits did not require hydrology studies and did not have those questions to be answered. And so we're following up then on our annual reports. So, but, another thing to take a look at is, it's not usually as easy as this straw in the ground is the one that's blowing out everybody's water. It could also be the illegal cultivation upstream or the other things that are downstream. It's a, it's a, it's a complex issue. And so I would not be comfortable taking immediately to a recommendation of revocation or, or some sort of action without the proper study.
Right, and, and the, the issue is that there's obviously not enough water in the area to sustain it. They're hauling themselves. So I was just wondering if there's something in this new, new document that would allow us to ratify if there's an issue with groundwater, because that is a huge issue. Looking through some of the public comments that we got in, we have the scenic highway setbacks, wanting a larger scenic highway setback. Zoning, there were some zoning, I wouldn't really call them complaints, but recommendations from the public, and I don't know if you got a chance to look at those, they've been trying to bring them forward, different, different people, so I wanted to bring that up, some, I think it had to do with the APZ and the timber line, the timber zoning where we don't take, take out too many trees. So I'm just bringing these up forward for other people that have rhodion, basically, and tree preservation, and then the, the odor concerns as well, but the major one was, of course, the groundwater. So I just wanted to bring those forward.
We have encountered a few instances where tree clearing has taken place through a timber conversion permit, and then timber conversion permits have specific criteria and reasons for them. Though there's a state permit, not a local permit.
Okay.
But we have encountered a few situations where these permits have been secured from the state, land has been cleared, and then all of a sudden, now it's not used for housing, it's used for cannabis. We are working on becoming more proactive to be able to handle that and discourage it strongly.
Okay. One of the other things that I'd noticed in a prior permit that we denied was the groundwater surveys were done in the spring when, during heavy rain seasons, and that's not the case. They're not getting that quantity in the summer hours, and just food for thought on that, and I don't know if there's a resolution.
Summer well testing?
Yes. They're, they're not testing during the, the summer, when, especially during drought years, so.
Definitely making note of that one. Thank you. It's a valid point.
Supervisor Sabatia?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a comment, because I'm not sure if you're alluding to the public comment that we received earlier this morning. But if there are water trucks coming in, that is illegal within our ordinance, it's only under specific emergencies. At one point, when we did our drought emergencies, we said drought is not the emergency, and emergency would be like a broken pipe. Drought is long extended periods. You should not be able to utilize that as a reason to bring in water trucks, but it is illegal at this moment in time, and I think it should continue to be so, to use water trucks to refill your area, because that means you've dried out the, your well, which has potential impact to all neighboring properties. So definitely something to think about as you're dealing with that.
Yes, and that's exactly what I'm talking about.
I wanted to just bring up the, and I apologize for doing so, but I know I worked on this, I have, but section 3-68 of Article 7, which is agriculture, cannabis is not allowed to be grown on the same premises as hemp. There is no setback, but premises also means property. That's the way that we alluded to it when we put it together, that way we wouldn't get confused as to what's this versus what's that, that, that was the way that it was passed at least. So there's no setbacks between properties, but there are other setbacks within the parameters of cannabis and whatnot, so just wanted to make sure that.
Was that in an ordinance that Mary can write down for me? Because we've been going by the state definition of premises.
Again, I, I live for these moments. It was passed on March 25th, 2020. So if you look up on our agenda, March 25th, 2020, and look up hemp, you'll find the ordinance that we passed.
We'll take a look at that.
And I have a lot more comments to make, but I'd love to hear from the public and let them speak. I know they've been here all day.
Go ahead.
Supervisors, Mary Claybon, Senior Planner, Community Development Department. Thank you for having us today. I just wanted to jump in on the hemp and cannabis premises versus property or area. So in discussions with CDFA, they have stated premises means a separate area, not a separate property, and hemp has to be identified with signage, and that is the only thing that separates hemp and cannabis at the state level. So what Community Development Department is doing is bringing forward a potential recommendation. So what community development department is doing is bringing forward a potential recommendation for setbacks. If we're going to align with the state and the majority of areas, this is one area that we want a clear delineation from. If that would be more helpful to discuss potentially offline. Because we have read the hemp ordinance, I've gone to the ag department and sat with their staff and gone through it line by line while we're receiving these zoning permits for hemp, making sure that we are moving forward with this the way that we're supposed to be. But according to CDF, A, there is no setback and they can be on the same parcel as long as a separate premise is delineated with signage and fencing.
Brett?
Yeah, just a question regarding the recommendation on the, for consideration on the setbacks from home schools. Do we even know where those are necessarily? Or how does that get figured out?
There is no publicly available roster as far as we know.
Okay. So that would be problematic.
Very.
Well, I don't, I, I think increasing the setbacks to residents solves it. Because whether you have children there all day or seniors there all day, whoever's in the house all day, it's going to be, you know, affected in the same way. So I, I think looking at the setbacks to residents and just not worrying about who has a homeschool and who doesn't.
It makes sense. There are some folks that wouldn't mind having it that close though as well. Anyhow, I'll open it up for public comment. If there's anyone that would like to come up, I know we've had a lot of folks waiting for this item and we'll go ahead and open it up. I know there's quite a bit of folks here for this. So if we could stick to the three minutes and if we can get through it, I'll let you come up for another comment after, for a brief follow-up if need be. But I'd like to really stick to the three minutes because if I have to give one side or one point of view, three minutes, and then I don't give the same amount to the other, it, it looks and feels as if we're giving a preference. So I want to make sure we know that.
Yeah, I completely understand. Good afternoon, board chair Crandall, vice chair Rasmussen. I'm just going to talk real briefly about the homeschool. I've been working with a lady for the last more than half a year on this issue. She may be on Zoom, but we did discuss this in the planning commission hearing and I do believe that former supervisor Green brought up a reasonable suggestion and it is to what supervisor Piska just mentioned. If the setbacks are increased to a thousand feet, doesn't really matter who's in the, who's occupying the building. They enjoy the same protection as a, a regular private school. Homeschools are a private school according to the state of California. They enjoy all sorts of protections, just like any other private school, whether it be a tattoo parlor or liquor store. The only outlier is with cannabis. Mr. Green had pointed out that it was never the intent of the county to deny home schools that protection. But as was asked by Vice Chair Rasmussen and confirmed by Director Turner, the way to identify and locate them was problematic. So I, I do think that the setback of a thousand feet from occupancies solves not only that problem, but also goes a long way to address the multitude of odor concerns, which is probably after water and roads is probably the next biggest thing. So I wish that the board support that recommendation from Mr. Green. And I personally think it's a good middle ground. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else would like to come, come on up, sir? State your name for the record.
Bill Wilson. In, in regards to setbacks, I have submitted, I think to four, I'm not sure if you still have them, studies from Minneapolis Water Environmental Federation that measured air plumes with poultry and livestock, which would be the same as cannabis smells. And in two mile an hour winds, it'll go 1,800 feet to 800 to 1,800 feet. In four mile an hour winds, it's 1,200. So a thousand foot setback, they concluded would give most protection about odors traveling in, in normal days. And setbacks, I would question, why are setbacks at a thousand feet for schools and parks and, and hiking trails? Why is it a thousand foot for there and not for residents? Where kids and people spend a heck of a lot more time than in schools. In the summertime, nobody's in schools. So why is there a thousand foot setback there instead of where the kids are during the summer? That would be my one concern about setbacks and and, and you get cannabis in an acre planting outdoor, you've got 2,000 to 3,000 plants. There is no way to control the odor and a thousand feet away is probably not going to be enough to mitigate the odor. So I don't think it should be anywhere near less than a thousand foot on setbacks. Just protect the people. And again, greenhouses that are well filtered seem to be the only way to do it. Setbacks aren't necessary there if they are properly filtered. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else in the chambers?
Did I give you this information again?
Thank you.
Michael Green, I wish to thank the previous speaker for citing my previous comments. I also recommend what I recommended before. And so, and I appreciate, I think the board got what I was laying down. It is problematic to figure out and map where home schools might be. But the bigger issue is how do we prevent nuisance odor complaints from off-site residents, residences generally? I have tried to drill down into our current ordinance. I do have some notes that I can share with the staff. If they're open to it. So, and for whatever reason, it's not baked in there. The new supervisors, we've been at this 10 years now. How many ordinances we've passed, I've lost count. And being able to kind of connect the dots is, is difficult. So on the issue of the farmland protection zone, going back to that particular ordinance, 3103, I think it is, there was an attached map to that ordinance. It did have, one of the purposes of that creation of that zone was the big polygons. So we have big exclusion areas that we're not sitting there trying to get very granular on four different types of state farmland that is hard to map on a parcel by parcel basis. We didn't have good state farmland soil mapping at that time. Looks like it may have improved since then, since there is an FM, FMMP map up on GIS now. But the original farmland protection zone map did not intend nor have the technology at that time to allow parcel specific review of state farmland maps. So as you consider whether to maintain the current farmland protection zone map or whether to make additions to it, as has been suggested, that's going to be one issue you're going to want to look at is do you want the more granular approach that is now offered with the FMMP in GIS? Do you want the big polygons that were passed in, in the ordinance when it was passed in 2020? And I see puzzled questions, so I don't have any answers for you. I just want to kind of communicate that was the history was to make it easier for staff and for applicants and for the general public to know where outdoor cultivation was prohibited and only greenhouse or indoor cultivation was going to be allowed. That's basically all of Big Valley, all of Scotts Valley, a big chunk of Upper Lake and, and the Red Hills region. So if you want to get more granular on the farmland mapping, that would be one approach. If you want to stick with big polygons, which have been working pretty well by all accounts, that would be another thing. And I think I'm close to my three minutes, so I'm just going to slide my notes right over here for staff and thank you.
Thank you for not coming up on the dais.
Any other comments? Any other public comment? Come on up.
Good afternoon, board. Margot Cambara. A revised cannabis ordinance will not resolve some of the recurring problems your board sees. Specifically appeals of cannabis permits. The current ordinance is not being followed. Required annual reports are not reviewed. Conditions of approval are not reviewed for compliance. Cannabis odor complaints go unaddressed for years. Odor, A cannabis odor situation was brought to your board's attention in January 2025 when CDD provided a cannabis ordinance task force update. That odor situation has not improved. In addition, evaluation of water availability and cumulative impact of projects is not robust or nor consistent. Now, CDD plans to address some of the shortcomings of the water availability studies and that's a great thing. But we are still far from water security. In the current ordinance, environmental, I'm sorry. Environmental professional Peggy King offered the planning commission recommendations on hydrology in her public comments sent on June 12th. The current, the current ordinance reflects policy gaps. A new ordinance developed without transparency will not resolve some of these recurring issues. A comprehensive policy for cannabis activity in the county is a better solution. Including public input is a good start in developing a comprehensive cannabis policy. The policy should inform ordinances. A patchwork of ordinances or a sprawling ordinance is not a substitute for a comprehensive policy. Thank you.
All right. Any other public comment?
Is this only on the water or is it on anything?
This is what it has to do with for cannabis, the cannabis policy recommendations.
For the ordinance.
Yeah, for the ordinance. Well, I think there's other folks. I don't know if they're coming up to speak or. No. Go ahead. Come on up, sir.
Thank you very much. Andrew Dobbs Kramer, here to read a letter on behalf of Nora Dalbaka, president of the LCCA and former cannabis ordinance task force member. Honorable, excuse me, honorable Chair Crandell and members of the board of supervisors. As you may be aware, the licensed cannabis industry in Lake County and across California is navigating significant challenges. Nonetheless, our local industry has demonstrated that it is a primary economic driver, directly supporting hundreds of jobs and generating millions of dollars in tax revenue each year. Thanks to the continued support of this board, cannabis tax revenue has increased by more than $250,000 year over year, marking three consecutive years of steady and incremental growth, resulting in a $3.4 million contribution last year alone. This forthcoming land use ordinance update will have far reaching consequences, not only for the cannabis industry, but for the broader local economy. As noted in the recently released California Cannabis Market Outlook commissioned by the Department of Cannabis Control, quote, "Local taxes, fees and restrictions increase costs for licensed businesses and can result in an effective local tax rate of more than 30%. Working to lower local restrictions, taxes and fees for licensed cannabis businesses would support the licensed market. Local costs affect decisions on where to locate and how resilient businesses are to down years in the market. These barriers to entry create advantages for unlicensed businesses." Some of the proposals discussed during the June 12th planning commission meeting represent a fundamental shift away from the goals originally outlined by the board when this ordinance review process began. These goals include the expansion of, excuse me, these proposals include the expansion of the farmland protection zone and new setback requirements for home schools, both of which would eliminate otherwise eligible properties and increase the cost of doing business in Lake County. These changes would discourage future investment, reduce employment opportunities and erode the stability of the legal market. We respectfully request that the board reaffirm its original directive to streamline regulations, reduce barriers to entry and eliminate redundant or unnecessary requirements. This is the path that will help attract and retain investment, support local jobs and strengthen tax revenue for public services. We would also like to clearly state our positions on the following. Setbacks. We support upholding the current setback standards. These have proven workable for both businesses and regulators. Homeschools. We strongly oppose the addition of home schools to the list of uses requiring setbacks. There is no official registry or oversight mechanism for home schools, making this standard nearly impossible to assess or enforce. It would place an undue burden on the community development department and create opportunities for abuse by opponents of otherwise compliant projects. Bond requirement. We do not support the proposed $50,000 bond requirement. These instruments have not yet been accessed in practice and it remains unclear whether they are even available to the cannabis sector. As written, this provision would place unnecessary financial hardship on small and midsize farmers without any demonstrated benefit to the county.